Okay, welcome to the Hampden Town Council meeting for June 19th, 2017. Could you please join me now for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the justiciable, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any public comments on the consent agenda? Discussion here, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is public comments. This is the chance for the public that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. This is their opportunity. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none. We'll move on to Item D2, Public Hearings. The consideration of the town council's proposed FY18 budget, including sewer budget, capital improvement budget, referred by the town council on June 7th, 2017. And at this time, I'll have the town manager Angus Jennings give a brief overview of the budget.
All right. I wanted to draw your attention to a number of, or a handful of significant changes in this year's budget. And I will point out for those in the audience, there is, in addition to the budget summary, which is available at the entrance to the room, we put together this document as a three-page, and the first two pages show by line item, any line item that increased by more than $1,000 from the current year to the next year. And then the third page is every line item that decreased by at least $1,000 from the current year to next year. So this is not by budget category, this is by kind of the finer points of the actual line items to help provide transparency on what is driving the change in the budget. So some of the key changes from current year to next year, I think clearly, in my view, the top of the list is moving away from this enterprise budgeting structure for recreation and pool. The council spent quite a lot of time considering this over the course of, I would say, a couple of years, and provided direction back in February of this year to go toward a traditional budgeting for those two departments. So that does have the effect of adding the expenses of rec and pool to the operating budget. It also adds just over a half a million dollars of offsetting revenues on the revenue side of the budget that had not been previously included in the budget. So that's, that's a clear change that if people look from last year to this year, the numbers on the both expense and revenue side, there's contribution because of that change. The second significant change, the proposed budget that's before you would add one firefighter. This would move closer to Chief Rogers' goal of getting to a full crew on each of the four shifts throughout the week. Right now, two of the crews have two people, two of the crews have four people. I'm, I'm sorry, two of the crews have three people. This will bring three of the crews to three people, leaving one of the four crews still at just two. This budget that's before the council tonight would restore a third full-time position to the Recreation Department. This is a position that had previously existed but has not been filled since fall of 2014, when the current director was promoted from her then-position as assistant. The budget factors in a 12% increase in health insurance from the FY17 budgeted amount. We've been given estimates that we expect our insurance premiums to go up by 10 to 15% as of January 1st of next year. So that increase will only affect half of FY18, but based on year-to-date spending in each of the health insurance lines in the current year, it's clear that we slightly under-budgeted health insurance in the current FY17 budget. So the 12% from current budgeted, I think, is going to get us to where we need to be for FY18. The budget factors in increased town responsibility for certain types of retirement plans under Maine-Pers, which is prescribed by Maine-Pers, that's not a discretionary increase. And while it's still well below past years, municipal revenue sharing from the state does increase somewhat to $393,000 in the FY18 budget from $377,000 in the current year's budget. And there are changes to the Homestead Act, which will increase exemptions for eligible homeowners from $15,000 of value to $20,000 of value. But the state reimbursement to the municipality for that lost revenue will increase from 50% to 62.5%. So it's not simple to, to provide the actual net effect of that, but I just want to make clear to everybody, the proposed budget does reflect that state policy change. We have once again projected or budgeted the use of Environmental Trust revenues to offset budgeted stormwater management expenses. So where the stormwater management has a proposed expense budget of just over $72,000, we have carried that same amount in proposed, or projected revenues on the, from the Environmental Trust, and we've met with the Environmental Trust Committee, and they're comfortable with that projection. This budget does take advantage of $109,000 of one-time revenues available in the Mayo Road Bond. That will be available in FY18. We are projecting an increase in excise taxes of about $110,000 from next year compared to this year. I think that's a conservative projection. I think if, they will probably go up somewhat more than that. And the budget that's before those in the audience and that's posted to the website draws from fund balance $200,000. But in the Finance Committee meeting earlier tonight, the committee did recommend increasing that amount to $300,000. And I reported to the committee, I feel that is a reasonable amount to draw. We are projecting that in the current, as we close out the current fiscal year, that we will add something on the order of $380,000 to fund balance as we close out FY17. So the bottom line, on the municipal side, we are looking at a increase of $213,009. That's an increase of 4.8%. On the school side, we're looking at an increase of $257,065, which is an increase of 4.1%. On the county, there's an increase of $42,165, or 5.3%. That all results in a cumulative increase of $512,239, which is 4.4%. And that does take into account the public works vehicles that were reported in the earlier meeting. So that's the, that's the actual number in the absence of any changes that the council may vote tonight.
I'd make a motion that we accept the, the budget as presented.
And then we'll have discussion.
Second.
At what point do we have the public hearing? Or is this it?
Right up, so the public can speak right now.
Okay, so we do that during the discussion period? I, I guess I just presumed it would take place before we, you know, made a motion in a second. Could be wrong.
Well, you know I can't let things go by without some comment. It's just my nature. So I wanted to say very sincerely to the public that there have been different votes by different councilors on various line items within this budget over the two or three months we've been working on it. But what we've been doing in common, in our own way as best we can, is finding that balance between relief to property taxpayers, but funding the services we feel the community is asking for. And every councillor faces that as best they can in their votes. Don't hold me to the figures, but with the slight change we made tonight with an additional $100,000 coming from the fund balance, I'm pretty sure that revenues are going to come very close to covering the increased tax burden that the town manager just mentioned. So it's not a budget in which any of us got a perfect outcome, but personally, I think it's a good budget and one the town can live with.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Comments? Have a motion in a second? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next item on the agenda tonight is Item A, the appointment of Steve and Brown to the Recreation Committee, referral from Services. Councillor Marble?
Steve came to the Services Committee last Monday and offered to put his life experience and coaching skills onto the rec committee, and we all went hallelujah, thank you very much. So with that done, I would make a motion to accept the appointment of Steve Brown to the Recreation Committee.
Second.
Any public comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is the appointment of Chief Joe Rogers as the acting town manager from July 5th to July 16th, 2017, and from August 28th to September 4th. That is, the town manager will be on a well-deserved vacation. And Chief Rogers will step in the acting position while he's gone. Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we appoint Chief Rogers Acting Town Manager from July 5th through July 16th, and again on August 28th through September 4th.
Second.
Any public comments? Discussion?
We just-
Councillor Marble?
You didn't bring up to him the possibility of having to take the lead on any deliberations regarding the RSU budget, did you?
It's the whole job, top to bottom. It's his.
Councillor McBike?
Yeah, I've got a question. Are you going to be in that Monday, the 3rd?
I will, yes.
Any other discussion or comments? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item is the return of votes cast at the June 13th, 2017 State Special Referendum, RSU 22 Budget Validation Election. Our town clerk, Paula Scott.
For the State Special Referendum, there were 376 yes votes to 212 no votes with one blank. On the RSU 22 Budget Validation Referendum, 272 yes, 319 no, with four blank ballots.
Thank you. So moving on under new business, Item A is a referral from Finance and Administration. Councillor Wild.
Yes, this is a referral. I'll make the motion that we authorize the expenditure of $833.33 for our share, which is one-third of the cost of two new LED portable scene lights. The State of Maine, Maine Municipal Association gave us a grant for two-thirds of the cost, not to exceed $1,666.67.
Second.
Any public comments?
Steve? Excuse me, Steve? Did you say $833.33?
Thirty-three, yeah.
Is it?
Yes.
Is this supposed to be?
I found a mathematical error.
I'm sorry.
And I clarified that with Chief on the cost, which was $2,500, and then clarified with Angus earlier.
I apologize.
It's okay.
It's okay, it's a good question to ask, thank you. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item under new business is 5B, again, a referral from Finance and Administration. Councillor Wild?
It was discussed in Finance and Administration, the Environmental Trust principle and income for eligible expenses. It's going to be two parts here. There's actually five different lines, but one of them is a reimbursement.
From the principal?
Reimbursement with principal, right?
From the principal.
Yep. So the first one is the reimbursement from Environmental Trust principal to host community benefit account for payments to the Drummond Environmental LLC in the total of $108,907.21 from July 2008 through May of 2016.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Any public comments? Discussion, questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? The next item under 5B is Items 2, 3, 4, and 5 by Finance. Councillor Wild?
This is a motion for reimbursement from Environmental Trust income to the General Fund for stormwater management costs in the total of all four of them put together of $300,911.11.
Second.
Public comments? Discussion, comments? Councillor McBike?
I'll just make a comment. Setting on the trust, it was very open that the past town manager and the system we had here was very specific in all the amounts that, that the town manager was able to bring forward to us, so that there was no effect that things were being hidden anywhere. It was being brought out, and it was very easy to see that where these monies had been taken out of places where the community benefit, host community benefit, they should not have been, and they were entitled to this. So it made it very, very clear and very easy for us, and I thank the town manager and staff for the work bringing that forward.
Thank you.
I did very much in the same line of, Councillor McBike, wanted to thank Angus and the staff for all their hard work and diligence on this. As you can see, this went back all the way to 2008, so I'm sure this was very time-consuming. Bottom line, over $400,000 coming back to the town. Great work.
Any other comments? Have a motion in a second? All in favor? All opposed? Next item under new business is the Contract Awards for 2017 Paving Program, a referral from Finance. Councillor Wild?
There's several different ones, aren't there?
Yep.
I've got the motions from the-
Yeah, I failed to write down the two different numbers.
Sure. Well, and the, the initial motion was made by Mayor Ryder, seconded by Councillor Saroyes to recommend that the primary paving contract go to Wellman, and the dollar amount wasn't specified because the bids were lower, so that allows the expenditure of the budgeted amount for paving.
Then I'll make a motion that the primary contract for the paving program be awarded to Wellman Paving.
Second.
Discussion? Councillor Marble?
Just an observation, glad to see the Department Director Courier taking advantage of at least current low asphalt prices, trying to get more roadwork done.
Basically, the way this worked is when he put out the RFP, he named specific roads and projects, estimating where that would come in in terms of the, the amount of funds available. When the prices came in significantly lower, it allows more work to get done than had been included in the initial bid.
Any other comments? All in favor? All opposed? The next item on that Contract Awards was for the Hopkins Roads for a mulch in to the road for B&amp;B paving, for $48,634. That was also in Finance.
Did you say that was $44,680?
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the contract for $48,634.60 for, what was the company?
B&amp;B.
P&amp;D.
B&amp;B.
P&amp;B. I hope.
Nope, B isn't Bob twice.
Okay, B&amp;B. Sorry about that. That's the effects of two hearing aids, folks.
Second.
Any public comments? Comments, discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The next item is under Item D, the contract for 2007 Pond Road Chip Seal, referred from Finance. Do you have that number, or do you want me to?
I've got that number.
Okay, thank you.
And I, this is a motion that we award the contract for the Pond Road Chip Seal. It was recommended from Director Sean Courier in the amount of $22,230.
Excuse me? I forgot the name of the company.
Allstate Asphalt.
Allstate Asphalt. Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
Public comments? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item is the Contract Award for the Public Works Metal Roof Rehabilitation. That was also a referral from Finance. Councillor Wild?
And this is a contract award for the Public Works Metal Roof Rehabilitation. I'll make the motion that we award the, authorize for the expenditure of $41,350 from the Garage Reserve Account, account number 0377-00.
I have a second?
Second.
And that was with Gates Construction. Any public comments? Questions? Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is Item F, a contract award for the 2017 Laura Hoyt Memorial Pool Interior Painting. There's also a referral from Finance. Councillor Wild?
And I'll make a motion that we award the contract for Laura Hoyt Memorial Pool Interior Painting and the authorization for the expenditure of $10,000 from the Pool Reserve Account, 0377-1-00.
Second.
Public comments? Discussion? Councillor Marble?
Just to make sure I'm remembering this right, we had $5,000 in the current reserve account, and this is for the next five?
That's correct. The approved, now-approved FY18 budget includes $5,000 in addition to the $5,000 that was included in the 17 budget.
And we did not require the Director, Darcy, to have to be involved directly in the painting herself, right?
Our insurance wouldn't cover that.
A supervisory role.
Side note, since I didn't write down all the contractors, this is being awarded to R&amp;M Painting.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor? All opposed? Next item on the agenda tonight is Committee Reports. Services Committee, Councillor Marble?
Services Committee met last Monday. To keep it brief, as we determined tonight, Mr. Brown is now a member of the Recreation Committee. Thank you very much. We had an update on potential budgeting for the town taking over temporary responsibility for operations and maintenance of the Kiwanis Civic Center, and we received an update on Children's Day planning from Shelley Abbott, the Recreation Director. The bulk of the meeting was focused on a discussion with reps from Woodard and Curran about the procedure they're going to lead regarding possible expanded recreational and parking facilities on the pool site. One of the emphases in that discussion was about the need for a real public process, an affair public process with notification, invitations, and discussion, and that's how this will go forward. We had an update and offered some recognition to all the folks working on the Pink Garden Park. If anyone hasn't seen the one we're talking about, it's out off the Patterson and Road, opposite Meadow, out near the transfer station. I had a chance to stop in Saturday morning and talk directly with some of the people working there, and it's really uplifting to see people take things on like that. It was evidently a Girl Scout project initially. Another individual in town got involved when he saw some vandalism occur earlier in the year, but it's, it's turning into a great story, and it's, and it's nice-looking. And we had some discussion about the Land for Maine's Future Program and the potential state funding to support and secure continuing public access to the Sawa-Dapisco Extreme, which will continue as long as that land's still available and we have the energy to work, looking for grant money from that program. And that's about what I have on the Services Committee meeting.
Thank you. Finance and Administration, Councillor Wild?
Yes, this would be the Wednesday, June 7th minutes, where we were discussing the actual percent increases from RSU 22 over the last, since fiscal year 2009 to fiscal year 2016. And then we kind of corrected it a little bit to include 17, so there was two different numbers being portrayed there. Up until 2017, the increase on the town side was rather insignificant, but 2017, I'm sure everybody remembers this, it was a little more than what we normally did. We also discussed the budget amendment for the sewer revenues and the overlay and order to properly credit the fiscal year 17 sewer amounts paid towards the General Fund and the inter-fund transfer deficit. Discussed the budget and the referral to council to set the public hearing, which we set for tonight, and we've already gone through. We also reviewed the tentative election timeline coming up on the November, November 7th, 2017 municipal election and potential bond referendums, where we may be discussing additional avenues for different things throughout the community that we might have to take a look, a closer look at. One of those things being Schoolhouse Lane, and they're scheduled to look at that at the Infrastructure Committee on June 26th, I believe, at 6:00 PM right here in the council chambers. We viewed the community, or committee priorities for fiscal year 18, and we also discussed summer schedule for council and committee meetings. The only big change being that there would not be a July 3rd meeting, that we would only have a, one council meeting on July 17th rather than two of them during July, just because it solely fell so awkwardly just before July 4th. That dubs it.
Thank you. Planning and Development, Councillor McBike?
My understanding is we did not have a planning and development meeting when it was scheduled. Gave that up for council that night, had a special council meeting for the budget, but we will have one this Wednesday night, and we will continue to plan and develop.
Thank you. Infrastructure, Councillor Saroyes?
We've had no meetings since our last town council meeting, but we have one scheduled for this coming Monday.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is the Town Manager's Report. Town Manager Jennings?
Well, I'm sure I share the council sentiment, breathe a sigh of relief that the budget process is formally over, except that it's not, because the school budget could change. And just to clarify for people watching from home, the, the town council had to act on the budget under the town charter, no later than 3rd Monday in June. And obviously, the school budget is somewhat up in the air, so the council did adopt a budget that carried the school funding amount that was originally proposed by the school board. So if that number should go down or should go up in, as the school budget process plays out, I just hope that that'll be set before the mill rate is set, which would be anticipated for mid-August. So that's kind of the timeline. We do expect that the RSU budget process will play out over the next six to eight weeks. There is an RSU Board meeting this Wednesday at 7:00, so if people are interested in better understanding that process, we'd encourage people to attend, but we will also continue to share updates as they become available on the timing- as they become available on the timing and what comes out of that revised school budget process. So I'd like to very sincerely thank the council for your attention and your patience during what has been a pretty strenuous budget process. You've had a lot of paper presented to you, been very attentive in listening both to me and to department heads over the course of many months. And I think it was a very healthy process, and I do want to thank you all for that. And I'd also like to thank staff, both department heads who put in tremendous amount of effort on proposing budgets, but also across the board, staff have been very helpful on the budget process specifically, as well as probably showing some patience for me because I have not had as much time to deal with non-budget issues as I do during the rest of the year. So now that we're through this, I can get back to kind of the full job and not just the financial side of things, so... And I also want to take just a minute to introduce Gigi Doobie. She's here tonight, shadowing Paula. She will be serving in the capacity as an acting clerk at a future meeting, so tonight's meeting is kind of a trial run.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is Counselor Comments. Counselor McAvoy?
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. I want to take this opportunity to offer a sincere thank you and congratulations to the other 318 taxpayers who stood up to Rick Lyons' chronically-out-of-control RSU 22 budget. This is only the beginning. You should not be surprised if the superintendent presents another in-your-face budget that is higher than the rejected one. That scenario was not as far-fetched as any reasonable person would think. My opinion is based upon comments made by Mr. Lyons at the vote on the budget articles, as well as comments from a Bangor Daily News interview. During the article approval process, Article 1 was defeated. Too high? Not at all. Too low? Mr. Lyons eliminated two or three teaching positions, and there were enough votes to force the superintendent to reinstate the higher spending level, even though Mr. Lyons made it quite clear that he was under no obligation to actually restore the teaching positions. Mr. Lyons said that once the dollar amount was set, he was free to allocate the restored money to any center he deemed appropriate. My question for Rick Lyons is, how many cost centers are related to or impacted directly or indirectly by the contractual relationship between the VZ School Department and RSU 22? Based upon documentation, which I recently received from Assistant Superintendent Emel Janest, my opinion is that there is at least one, and likely more. To paraphrase another concerned taxpayer's response to the school board president's question, "Are you an accountant?" No, I'm not an accountant, but I can read. The good news is that we are fortunate enough to have several citizens who do have the expertise to recognize the significance of this sort of inappropriate expenditure of RSU 22 taxpayer funds. The bad news is that not one of them sits on the RSU 22 Board of Directors. I hope that there are taxpayers out there who have an opinion about my opinion, and I would like to speak with you. Please do not call the town manager. Unlike the school board, the town's chief administrator does not control its elected officials. Please call me at 478-2519-848-9991, or 862-4895. I should be close to one of them most of the time. June 13th was a day many of us are proud of and also draw hope from the affirmation that your vote does count. As always, please shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
Thank you. Counselor Comer?
No comment.
Counselor Marble?
Just a couple things. I want to join in earlier praise tonight for our town manager, but not only with regards to the really carefully-done, thorough, almost audit work on past year's expenditures and reimbursements from the Environmental Trust account, but for all the work he's put into the budget, the fact that he's reliable, that he's trustworthy, and that he's incredibly detailed. Although I wouldn't be surprised if a couple of the town staff haven't minded every moment that you've been tied up with the budget and didn't have to so-called help them with other matters. It gives the council just a lot of assistance in what we're trying to do representing you folks. And it's good to have that kind of excellence in-house. The other thing I want to mention is a shout-out to the Dudley Street Flower Gang or Garden Gang. I don't know what I should call them, but they've made that corner just opposite the water plant really beautiful again in that triangle. So they deserve a little shout-out for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Wild?
No comment.
Counselor McBike?
Yeah, briefly, having... setting on the Penobscot County Budget Committee for approval process, it's very nice to be able to go through the process as we did here, step-by-step, as compared to getting a large three-ring binder put in your lap to look at and not really understanding where everything's coming from. So I appreciate the work that the town manager did and all the staff did in getting this to us, and I'm really pleased that we're done.
Thank you. Counselor Saroyes?
No comment.
I guess I'd like to echo in with some of the fellow counselors. I want to thank department heads and the staff and the town manager especially for a lot of long hours. Tried to leave him alone and not bother him much for the last month or so because I know he's got enough headaches without mine. But I really appreciate all the effort, and I know sometimes the department heads probably don't agree with all the decisions we make, and I can understand their viewpoint. But we're all in this together, and I think bottom line is we're all trying to do the best what's for Hamden, every chance we get. So I just want to congratulate and thank everybody for all the hard work, and that's the end of my comment. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good night, Hamden.